The town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of August 13, 2025 is now called to order. I will now call the roll. Commissioners, please state here when your name is called. Commissioner Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Rasby.
Here.
Vice Chair Birch.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Stump.
Here.
Commissioner Sorty.
Here.
And I am here as well. Please stand if you are able as Commissioner Stump leads us in the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the Planning Commission conducts the meeting this evening, we encourage active participation by the public. It's so great to see so many people here. You should come tomorrow for meetings. The public can participate in several ways. First, prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to staff. During the meeting, there are two opportunities for member of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda for tonight. Second, during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, any member of the public may speak about an agenda item. You will be advised of the times when to speak on each of the items. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communications portion or a public hearing agenda item, please raise your hand on Zoom or, for those in person, complete a speaker card and give it to a staff member. The speaker cards are these yellow speaker cards right here. Please print your name and if you are, or just your initials if you are writing, if you are speaking anonymously. When you are called to speak, you will come up directly to the podium and speak into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded. You will state your name and address for the record or indicate you are speaking anonymously, and we'll have three minutes to speak. So now we will begin with the verbal communications portion of the meeting, during which members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Staff will announce when your three-minute time limit is up. I do not have any cards. Are there any hands raised on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar. Tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar being the approval of the draft minutes of the June 25, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the commission or public may request that the item be removed. Are there any such requests? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Vice Chair Birch.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Okay. Seeing none, I now call the question and ask for a show of hands in favor of the motion. And that passes unanimously. We will now move on to our public hearing, starting with item number two. This is to consider an appeal of a Community Development Director decision to deny a request to remove a pre-1941 property from the Historic Resources Inventory for property zoned R-18, located at 16805 Loma Street, APN 532-07-101, exempt pursuant to Secu Section 15061B3. Request for review PHST-25-007. The property owner and appellant is William Wondrum, and the applicant is David Britt Row. Before the staff report, I do just want to say, I know a lot of you are here for item three, and we are going to be doing item two for a few minutes. So if you do not want to sit here for that, or you would like to be chatting with your neighbor, I just ask that you go into the lobby, and I think we'll shut those doors so that you can chat as much as you want out there. But it will be a few minutes, so. Before the staff report, can I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the property? Great, everyone. And are there any disclosures that we need to make? Okay. Mr. Mullen, will you be presenting the staff report tonight?
Yes, thank you and good evening. Before you this evening is an appeal of a Community Development Director decision to deny a request to remove a pre-1941 property located at 16805 Loma Street from the Historic Resources Inventory. The subject property is located on the north side of Loma Street and is currently developed with a single-family residence constructed in 1929, per the county assessor. The property is not within a historic district, is not included in the 1990 Bloomfield Survey, and is not located within the coverage area of the Sandborne Fire Insurance Maps. On May 28, the Historic Preservation Committee received the staff report, held a public hearing, and discussed the request to remove it from the inventory. The HPC voted three to two to recommend denial of the Community Development Director, finding that the residence still has integrity and is typical of a California bungalow. The director denied the request for removal on May 30. On June 4, the decision of the director was appealed to the Planning Commission by the property owner. And as a reminder, appeals are considered de novo. The Planning Commission may render a decision anew without reference to the conclusions made through the previous decision. On the appeal form, the appellant indicated that the HPC stated that there were no changes to the residence, but neglected a reference to a 1967 picture demonstrating changes to the windows, doors, and roofing. An additional letter from the appellant was provided in support of the appeal, included as Exhibit 7 to your staff report. The letter includes an executive summary detailing reasons the appeal should be granted, two separate historic and architectural evaluations of the property, property research conducted by the property as required for an HPC application, neighborhood feedback, transcripts of the April 23 and May 28 HPC meetings, and a structural condition report produced by a licensed structural engineer. The staff report provides a detailed discussion of each point raised by the applicant, excuse me, the appellant. For reasons stated in the staff report, it's recommended that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the director to deny the request to remove the pre-41 property from the Historic Resources Inventory. Staff notes that an addendum and desk item were distributed ahead of tonight's meeting, and this concludes my presentation, and staff's available to support your discussion.
Vice Chair Birch, you have a question for staff at this time?
I do. Just to confirm, we are not providing any input on the proposed future design of the home, correct?
That's correct. The request in front of you tonight with the appeal is the removal from the inventory.
Can I ask one follow-up? Also, you noted that there are two reports that have been included. These were not part of the original HPC package. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Burnett, and then Stump.
Mr. Mullen, is it correct that the general policy and practice of the Community Development Director is to support the decision of the Historic Preservation Committee?
Yes, typically, the recommendation is forwarded to the director, and the director's decision reflects that recommendation.
Mr. Mullen, when a pre-1941 property or a property designated in a historic district in Los Gatos is sold, does this have to be disclosed to the buyer at the time of the purchase?
I'm not available or able to answer that question. I'm not sure what real estate law would say.
I can say there's a general rule that a broker is required to disclose anything that potentially impacts the property value of a home.
Is that something that we make them aware of? How does the Realtor know about pre-1941 historic? I assume just because they work in this area?
I think most Realtors would probably do research on the property that they're representing.
Thank you. I do have one additional question. In referring to the desk item that you sent this afternoon, Mr. Mullen, item two, page two, the five criteria used to evaluate historic significance are listed in Los Gatos. You state that the National Park Service and the state clarifies that criteria one through four are used to determine if a potential resource is significant. So what about criterion five? Is that unique to Los Gatos?
I can't say whether it's unique to Los Gatos, because I'm not sure if other jurisdictions use integrity as a individual criterion for significance. The point trying to be made in the desk item is to show the difference between the Los Gatos criteria and the state and national registers. And it wasn't, admittedly was not a deep dive into the state and the national codes. I've already done some research on that, but presented just at a high level. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. A question for our staff. So if a home is removed from the historic inventory, does it then, is it reviewed by our architect, our town architect, and has to go by the design guidelines of the town?
It's a good question. I think it depends on the level of development or work being proposed. If someone, for example, removed, was successful in removing a property from the inventory, but they were only going to do work that could be done only through a building permit, such as maybe replacing windows or making a small, single-story addition, typically, the town's consulting architect would not be involved. Staff would apply the design guidelines, and staff, through the director, has the authority to refer things for Mr. Cannon's review. Conversely, if the project is going to go through a discretionary application, like a minor residential development application or an architecture insight, the typical process is to require peer review through Mr. Cannon.
Thank you for that.
Any more questions for staff at this time? Yeah, Commissioner Rasby?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question, referring again to the desk item that you circulated today. And again, thank you to staff for preparing these materials in advance of the meeting. I find them very helpful. Referring to the discussion of the technical demolition of a building, and I believe what we have is a discussion that 25% or more of the alteration of the front of a structure could count towards a technical demo of an historic building. Is that correct?
So there's two measures for looking at historic. And I'll back up a little bit and say that when we're looking at historic, we're looking at the exterior finished materials, so not the framing. It's the stucco siding or the clavert siding, something like that. The front facade is limited to demolition to 25%. And then, in addition, all four elevations, those facades, are limited to 50% together.
And you've clarified it, but one question. The roof line which faces the street, is that part of the facade that we can consider if it's been changed?
The roof line is not considered in that calculation. It's the wall planes. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Sorty?
Since everyone else has asked a question, this is a little bit more of a legal question. I guess, is there any finding we can make about financial hardship associated with these cases? Or is it strictly the HPC findings associated with the specific five that we need to address in order to justify demolition?
There's no specific legal findings in the code, but I think the overarching issue would be whether or not the town's regulation constitutes a taking. And this issue has come up a couple times before, before the Planning Commission. And the standard for a taking, as you probably know, is that the regulation deprives the property owner of all economic value.
Okay, we will have additional opportunities to clarify questions with staff, but we will now open the public portion of the public hearing on item number two and give the appellant and their team an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. So whomever will be speaking first on behalf of the appellant, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record. And then, if you have multiple, I know that we filled out multiple cards, so just you guys split up your five minutes however you want. Is that okay for them to switch?
Yes, as long as they adhere to the time limit.
Okay, thank you. You can adjust, sorry, you can adjust the microphone, so it's, there you go. You can also remove it if you would rather hold it. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry, actually, we'll start over. I don't think the microphone is on. Or if it is, you're not, we're still not speaking. Oh, it is. Okay, sorry. You have to speak, speak more. Okay, thank you.
Okay. My name is Bill Wondrum. Thank you for your time. We're here to appeal the narrow two to three vote against our application to remove our structure from the inventory list for the following reasons. The House satisfies all of the town's required findings for removal from the list, as well as a series of reasons noted on this slide. Next slide, John. Culminating in concerns over the HPC's incorrect application of the required findings and bias towards maintaining structures on the inventory. This is documented in the executive summary and transcripts provided. We provided two technical memos from professional architectural historians to respond to the original HPC decision. Jen Hembray of Page and Turnbull and Brad Brewster, who is on Zoom from Brewster Historic Preservation, are here with a collective 50 years of professional experience. Next slide, please. Based on the transcripts provided, there are no challenges or questions regarding town's required findings for number one, number two, or number four. So I'm going to hand it over to Jen, who will present her analysis on required findings five, three, and five, the findings alluded to by the dissenting HPC members. Please ask questions. Thank you.
I'm Jen Hembray. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak to you. Page and Turnbull was retained by the property owner, Bill, to provide our professional opinion specifically about the property's architectural merit and integrity. Our conclusions, next slide, please, are presented on this slide. And to sum up, we found that the property does not fully embody the character-defining features necessary to individually convey architectural merit as a craftsman bungalow. We arrived at this conclusion through the industry standard methodology, which is outlined here. Next slide, please. The first step in our methodology involves a visual inspection of the property. I've included photographs that I took on site, and here are some observations. There is a replacement door at the front. There are replacement windows flanking the front door. There's also a contemporary gutter that has altered exposed rafters along the front roof line. In addition, I noticed that there's inconsistency in the installation of the triangular decorative knee braces. Most of them are simply applied to the facade, as opposed to being integrated and installed through the use of joinery. Additionally, in the lower left is the fact that the property has received a rear addition, which expanded its original footprint. Next slide. Step two of our methodology consists of a historical comparison of the property today with its historic appearance based on archival information that we can find. At the left of this slide, we have the earliest known image of the property, and it dates to 1967. This image shows and proves to us that historically, the front facade of the property featured exposed rafter tails evenly spaced along the front facade or along the roof line. Additionally, at the front, the front windows consisted of tripartite, meaning a grouping of three windows rather than one in each of the openings. Additionally, at the right-hand side of this slide, we have physical evidence found within the attic of the property that the roof historically featured roof shingles. Next slide. Step three of our methodology involves analyzing the property in its historic architectural context. In this case, the architectural context of the craftsman style. How do we do this? We first must determine what are the character-defining features, meaning what are the essential physical features that commonly recur in a particular style. A property must clearly contain enough of these characteristics to be considered a true representative. We use Virginia McAllister's Field Guide to American Houses, which presents us with a list of character-defining features that must be present for a building to be considered a true representative of the craftsman style. The table here shows us that this property on Loma only contains four of the 10 character-defining features necessary for a craftsman-style bungalow. The property lacks tapered square porch columns, and it lacks extending porch elements. It is also lost exposed rafter tails, which are now removed and concealed because of the contemporary gutter. It has also lost its original tripartite windows.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the appellant's team at this time? Yeah, Vice Chair Birch.
This is for, I think, Jennifer. During your research of the home, were you able, aside from the windows and the doors and everything, were you able to tell what other perhaps modifications or additions were made to the home?
No, it's still unclear if the knee braces themselves may have been added later. They don't necessarily appear on the front facade in that 1967 image, but it's also a very challenging image to discern clearly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barnett?
Unfortunately, I don't have the pages in the staff report, but if I could read this quickly, there's a phrase, or an extract that says, "Constructed in 1929, the property at 16805 Loma Street is not a unique craftsman-style bungalow constructed in the area and dates to the end of the period when the style lost favor." Then it goes on to say, "The property is also not the best example of a craftsman bungalow in Los Gatos." There you are. So my question is, is it a craftsman bungalow even though it's not the best example?
It is, it was designed in a craftsman bungalow style, but it is not a good representative. It does not fully embody the style, and nor does it have all of the character-defining features necessary to which we would consider it individually significant as a representative of that style.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sorty?
Just a quick question for Ms. Hembray again. You mentioned the addition, and I'm just curious to know, is there any, can you discern about how much square footage was added on in that addition compared to the original?
Off the top of my head, no, but I think the owner knows.
It's coming up in the next section, but it is 25% of the footprint was added to the original.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we good with questions for now? Okay. Thank you. We now invite comments from members of the public. If you have not already turned in a speaker card to staff, please do so at this time if you would like to speak on item number two or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. When you are called to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. So the first speaker card I have is for Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, but I am speaking as a member of the public, although I find that it's difficult to separate my thoughts as a member of the public and a member of the Planning Commission, of the Historic Preservation Committee. But I am not speaking for the Historic Preservation Committee. I want to make that very clear. I'd like to thank staff and the Planning Commission for the desk item tonight with its clarifications. I agree with the conclusions of the two historic reports that this structure would not qualify for being a landmark using the criteria of the National Park Service uses for that designation. However, I don't believe that the town of Los Gatos expects all of its pre-1941 structures to meet that standard. If we did, not only would we lose a large majority of our pre-1941 homes, but it also would not be consistent with the general plan's emphasis on preserving our historic neighborhoods. The applicant submitted an incredible amount of information in three different times. It's over 250 pages. A lot of it repeats itself. Occasionally, there are some differences. But the major difference is that it analyzed everything in the eye of the National Park Service criteria, not the town's. Given the town's criteria, your focus should be strictly on this particular structure, not on neighboring structures, not on defining features of the excellent examples of the type of architecture, but rather on the defining features of this particular structure. It should not focus on the federal findings for determination. It should not focus on demolition, because that's not part of the application before you. It should not focus on the replacement structure, because that's not before you. And it should not focus on the neighbors' support of the replacement structure, because that, again, is not what is before you. So I had a lot to say, and I don't, never got it organized, but I would like to say that, given all of those things that I've eliminated, that you should not be looking at and just looking at the findings that are required by the town, that's what the focus, oh, God.
Are there any questions for the speaker? No? Okay, thank you. The next speaker card I have is for Dave Renner.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dave Renner. This house, that I know all of you have visited, is not in the historic district of Los Gatos. It's over a mile and a half away, and it's a very, very simple structure. It's not, it's not one that really has any features that is noteworthy of preservation. I've read the executive summary and the two professional reports that were submitted, which clearly state that the property does not qualify under national, state, and town criteria. They're very, very similar, and by the way, there was just a reference about national parks. It's the national criteria, not national parks necessarily. It's the national criteria, not, not national parks necessarily. So if you look at all of them, they're relatively consistent, and even under town criteria, this does not qualify. The qualified professionals assessed the property for historical significance, integrity, and eligibility, came to, and they came to the identical result, that the house does not qualify. I encourage you to ask the professionals the relevant questions under this, under these rules. Bill has drafted a very easy-to-follow slide on the criteria that should be reviewed prior to the closure of comments. It helped me understand the architectural significance, the integrity assessment, and eligibility. All neighbors on Loma Street have been supportive of this proposal, and Bill and Brenna have been long-term supporters of Los Gatos, and have been Los Gatos residents for a long time. There is a reference to a photo in 1967. That is the first known photo of this property. The rules for, for preservation date back prior to 1941, where there is no documentation of what the home looked like during that period of time. So I urge you to, to look at that fact pattern as well. The first photo, 1967, there was a satellite image in 1936, which shows a different footprint of the home than it is today. There's no record of what it was prior to 1941. So what are we actually even preserving? It's very unclear. The other thing I would just mention is that Lee Quintana, you know, made some points as a neighbor, but it really, really came across as her additional stand as the HPC board to basically sway your decision, which I don't think is appropriate. This is a separate venue, and so that's fine, she can be treated as a, as a neighbor, but should not come across as an expert. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Okay, next, I have a card for Thomas Salj. Thank you, and you will have three minutes.
Thomas Salj, perfectly pronounced, thank you. I'm a neighbor here in town. I've known Bill and Brenna for over 15 years as friends. They've spent a lot of time preparing for this appeal, documenting the issues, transcribing the sessions, to provide a detailed executive summary that you received. I've read the two professional reports, and it seems quite clear to me that this structure was never architecturally significant in the first place. They've also detailed other examples of similar modest structures on the street that have been removed from the inventory list under the same required findings. Finally, they have reached out to many neighbors to get their input, and the neighbors are supportive of their vision, as am I.
Thank, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Next, I have Catherine Rose.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Rose. I'm a neighbor on 16460 Ferris Avenue, which borders the left-hand corner of the home. We've lived there for 35 years. The home has been in disrepair for 35 years and not well taken care of. I've never heard or considered it to be of historic value, but understand that, you know, these criteria aren't always clear to the lay public. I agree with the comments by the two previous neighbors, and don't have really additional information there, but I do support the appeal of the Wondrums to demolish the house and continue with their project.
Thank you. Any questions? Great, thank you so much. Next, I have Clay Wayman.
Hi, Clay Wayman. I live at 16457 Englewood Avenue. I've actually never met the applicants before, but I happen to live right around the corner. I walk by it every day with my kids. To the last lady's point, the house has been in disrepair for as long as I've lived there, which is over 10 years now. I realize that the lady from the Historical Society says that maybe the neighbor's opinion shouldn't matter, but the reality is that in the town of Los Gatos, we are very supportive of each other, and I think that it's important for you guys to understand that we do support this project, even having, I've not read any, I happen to be here for a different issue. I've never read any of the other, I've never read any of the documents, I've never met these people, I just know that it's something that is going to make no impact to my life. If anything, it's going to be, like was pointed out, the removal and beautification of a lot that has been left alone for the most part for a long time. So anyways, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? The final speaker card I have for this item is for Carrie Lindholm.
Well, I ditto what everybody before me has said. I live immediately adjacent to the property. I'm at 16801 Loma Street, and I've been there for 27 years, and that grass has been three and a half feet tall for the past 27 years. So the maintenance on that house has been horrible and has not added anything to our community or our neighborhood. But I, beyond that, we purchased our home. It was also a pre-1941 home. We purchased it in 1998. We went through the same process. We had to come through the town council and the HPC, and in fact, I think Ms. Quintana was on one of those committees when we presented our home, and we were allowed to rebuild, tear down our home and rebuild a house to our specifications. The neighbor immediately to the left of our house was almost a carbon copy of 16805. They also were allowed to tear down that home and build a new home to their specifications. I attended the HPC meeting in April, and I just left that meeting feeling baffled. The decision was not unanimous in denying their application. It was obvious the committee was confused about what standards they should use, how do you deem a house historical, kind of all the questions you have asked prior to this. They clearly stated during that meeting that the guidelines are ambiguous. Many members stated they were confused and frustrated because of the lack of clarity, and even their own language was contradictory and not consistent. They really were frustrated because they didn't know how to apply the standards, and it was, they even referenced prior projects that had come up before them, whether they were applying the standards properly. So obviously, something has to change with this process, and with the HPC committee getting clear standards to apply by. One of the members actually stated that maybe they were more conservative than members on the HPC from years past. That shouldn't be the case for applying to future projects. It shouldn't matter who's on the committee. It should be clear standards, and everybody should apply the standards the same way, no matter who is on the committee. And I just want to say, I don't think this project meets any of the standards. Not every bungalow in Los Gatos automatically merits preservation simply because it's a bungalow, or evokes memories of the past. This house is not made by a master. It doesn't have architectural significance, nor is it in a historic district. So Bill and Brenna are trying to build a home that suits their family's needs while respecting the character of our neighborhood. They live in our neighborhood already, they understand the character of Los Gatos, they've been proactive in reaching out to everybody on the surrounding streets. I mean, they've, they've, they probably know more people in our neighborhood than I do. So I just hope they'll be able to build.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? No? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. We, I now invite the appellant's team. Sorry. We have some speakers on Zoom?
We have a speaker on Zoom.
Okay, I am so sorry, not quite yet.
Lexi, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Brian Balastri, with my wife, Michelle Balastri. We live at 16505 Englewood. We know many of the people that have spoken this evening. Regarding the Wondrums, we have not known them for a long time. We've met them a few times through our dogs wanting to play together as they walk down the street in our neighborhood. We are very familiar with this house in question, and as others have said, it's not within a historical district. If you look at it, and you look at all the other homes around it, there is no significance. I would say to the contrary, it actually is an area that most people who walk this neighborhood, family and friends that we know, who we tell this story of saying that they're being forced to go through this process, say, "For that house? Are we talking about the same house?" And unfortunately, the answer is yes. We fully support their plans to build a house that we feel would absolutely add to this neighborhood. They are people who we want in this neighborhood. They have connected many of us, and we fully support their efforts. We've seen their designs, and I, my wife and I were raised in Los Gatos. We return to Los Gatos. We know what historical preservation looks like. We've seen those homes out there. This property in question is not one of those, and we fully support them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Are there any additional hands raised on Zoom?
There are not.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the appellant come up to make a closing statement, so you'll have an additional three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I fully respect the neighbor's right to speak as a resident, but it concerns me that the HPC chair is presenting as a neighbor who lives two miles away from the house and is further expressing her view to the Planning Commission, considering she was a tie-breaking vote in May. As an applicant, it doesn't feel like the HPC process was impartial. The facts are about the front facade has been modified, roof, windows, door, posts, leaving only 30% originality by measurement. There's an addition in 1967 with added 25% to the footprint. Again, it's not in a historic district, it's not on the Sanborn maps, it wasn't even annexed until 1999. Other very similar modest houses, as Carrie was referring to, and the Dallas House was approved under the same required findings as noted by the emails to the committee. And there are actually no denials on Loma Street in the first place. And dissenting HPC members stated, even though other homes have been changed in the neighborhood, maybe they were by a less conservative group on the HPC. So question is, should HPC members change the interpretation of the required findings when those findings haven't changed? In March, an HPC member said, "I hate to remove anything from the inventory list, it's like going to the dentist." HPC members have an obligation to provide an unbiased assessment for all residents, regardless of personal views. Finally, the Bloomfield survey is held in regard, but bungalow doesn't qualify architectural significance on its own, and we're comparing a windshield survey from 35 years ago to two complete assessments conducted today that disagree with that preliminary survey based on substantial evidence. Go to the next slide, please, Sean. The experts have qualified, the structure doesn't meet eligibility as a contributing historic resource. Jen stated, required finding three. It does not fully embody the character-defining features necessary to individually convey architectural merit as a craftsman bungalow. And Brad, who's on Zoom, it's an exceptionally modest and simplified version of the style that would not rise to the level of the local landmark for its architectural values. Required finding five. A substantial amount of original features have been removed and do not date to 1929. Wrapping up with an integrity has been compromised, such that the structure no longer has the potential to convey significance. So I hope the Planning Commission reconsiders the HPC recommendation based on the new evidence provided from the experts, that the house does not belong on the list. And if we could go to slide 12, one more slide I'd like to quickly review on just the left side. Key takeaways are, there are two cases for removal. Group A, the structure is not significant in the first place, required findings one, two, three, four. Or the structure was originally significant, but the integrity's been compromised, or the structure is not significant today. Required finding five, that's what it states. The difference between the two cases is the latter case requires a prerequisite of significance. Loma Street was never significant in the first place, as per the experts have said, and the integrity's been compromised anyway. So are there any questions here? There's an example to the right.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the appellant or their team at this time? No? Okay, thank you very much for all the information, and thank you for the public comments. We will now be closing the public portion of this public hearing on item number two, and I invite commissioners to ask questions of staff, provide comments, and eventually propose a motion. Commissioner, you want to, okay. Commissioner Burnett.
Thank you, Chair. The staff report includes findings by a structural engineer that there is a lack of shear walls and tie-downs on the foundation, which obviously is a safety concern, but my question is, can we consider that in the context of the appeal?
Thank you for that question. Typically, the structural condition is not part of the findings for removal or determining if a structure is significant or can convey significance. I think it's understandable that a structure that was built close to 100 years ago may not meet the current codes for hold-downs and shear wall.
Commissioner Rasby.
Thank you, Chair. I'll go ahead and provide my initial thoughts. First of all, I wanted to thank the applicant for a couple of things. First of all, the exhaustive work and presentation you've given to us. I know you went out and hired a couple of experts at probably no small expense. So thank you for those efforts, I think that helps us. And also, it's clear you did a significant amount of neighborhood outreach, which we always, I think, as a town, we encourage our applicants to work with your neighbors whenever possible. So thank you for those two actions. As to the matter before us, we see these removal applications from time to time, and they're always a little difficult. I always try to focus on the five criteria that the town has laid for us, and if we go through those, it seems to me that it helps us to reach the answer. So going through them quickly, first of all, as the applicant noted, this house was not even part of the town of Los Gatos until 1999, and therefore, it wasn't part of the Bloomfield survey, wasn't part of the Sanborn maps, and as a result, I think that strikes to three of the criteria. It's not associated with events significant to town, no significant persons are associated with the site, and the structure does not yield information relevant to town history, which then leaves us with the criteria three and five, which I think are really the linchpins, the distinctive characteristics and the compromise of the integrity. And I think on those points, the expert reports, which I think HPC did not have before them, are crystal clear. Those make clear that this building is not a particularly excellent example of any architectural style. Yes, it's craftsman, but there are better craftsman buildings in town, and we aren't obligated to necessarily save every example of a craftsman home. If that were the case, we would never demolish a building. The note has been made that the experts relied on national or state criteria, but I think our staff report makes clear that our town criteria are derived from those criteria. So while night identical, I think the expert reports give great weight to our analysis, and thus, I think if we examine the five criteria, all of them weigh in favor of granting the appeal in this case. And those are my thoughts, Chair.
Vice Chair Birch.
Thank you. I won't repeat everything Commissioner Rasby said, but I do want to say that I completely agree with all of his points. I served on the HPC for a number of years, and I do know that, you know, we take removal of any items off the historic registry very serious, but there are five criteria for a reason, and those have been the backbone of these decisions for a very long time. And I think it's been made quite clear that this home does not meet any of these findings. And I think that by providing the two additional reports, I think you've probably helped anybody that has maybe had a lingering question, because I know Paige and Turnbull very well. They do a great job of digging into the past of a home and providing a very, very excellent report. So I agree with Commissioner Rasby on supporting removal.
Commissioner Burnett.
Thank you for that. And so, after reviewing all the additional material received, presented, I plan to make the following comments and some conclusions. There was an important point in the consideration of the appellant's appeal I feel I can elaborate on for clarification, and I think this is important, although I disagree with the appellant's contention that the criterion five, which speaks to integrity, is not a criterion. The Los Gatos Historic Preservation Committee, which I am a member of, and sort of interesting provocative comments made by the appellant- and sort of interesting provocative comments made by the appellant, the Los Gatos Historic Preservation Committee does consider all the five criterion findings independent of one another. Surely, a structure that has the potential to convey significance as criterion five describes has enough merit to stand alone, not as the appellant describes it, only to be used to decide if significance conveyed through criteria one to four is still present. Criterion five speaks to other considerations not identified in the state and national definitions and is part of the regular Los Gatos Historic Preservation Committee regular decision-making in making a determination if a home should be taken out of the dwindling, our dwindling historic inventory. The word integrity used in criteria five has a broader interpretation when used in a historic content. It is an important word giving greater definition and description of individual features of a presumptive historic home to be taken out of our inventory and what character-defining detail should be considered in more detail. And based on the new material provided, I can further say that I would probably, well, I would go ahead and grant the appeal. All five, all the findings, including number five, which is provided in our report. Thank you.
Commissioner Burnett.
Yeah, I have nothing to add but wanted to echo the great comments that have been made by my fellow commissioners and certainly support a motion to grant the appeal.
I will, do you want?
I would consider making the motion.
I will just make one comment first and just that I serve on the HPC right now too. And I did not support the motion to deny this request, to forward that to the Community Development Director. And because I did feel like it met all of the criteria to be removed at that time. And I feel like the additional information that has been provided confirms that. So I just would like to echo my fellow commissioners. And if Commissioner Barnett would like to make a motion, that would be lovely.
Yes, thank you. So with respect to item two on our calendar today on the agenda concerning the appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to deny a request to remove a pre-1941 property from the historic resources inventory for property zone R-18 located at 16805 Loma Street, APN 532-07-101, exempt pursuant to SEQA, Section 15061B3. Request for review PHSD-25-007. Property owner and appellant is William Woodrum. I move that the Planning Commission grant the appeal for the reasons that have been articulated, particularly the inability to make the findings required by the Section 4.6 of the Residential Design Guidelines.
And in Exhibit Two. Everything included in Exhibit Two. I think that's all that's in there, but.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Vice Chair Birch.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, thank you very much. We, I appreciate that. However, this is a really great reminder that we actually prohibit clapping. And, no, it's only, not, not in this situation. It's typically, but this is a good reminder just because I know that a lot of you are here to speak on the next item, that we don't clap to support, like, when someone makes a comment. So thank you for, for your support of us. And we do just need to read the appeal rights before we move on to item number three.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the form is available on the town's website and at Town Hall.
Okay, thank you very much. So as some people are shuffling out, I know that we have a lot of people that are here to speak on item number three. So just a reminder, if you arrived after the meeting started, you can fill out a speaker card and turn it into staff. So one of these yellow cards. So we will now move on to our public hearing on item number three. Thank you. Oh, perfect, thank you. Which is item number three, right? Did I say that? Okay, item three, which is to consider a request for a grading permit and removal of large protected trees associated with a comprehensive redevelopment of the La Rincanada Golf Course on property zoned RC and R-120 located at 14595 Clearview Drive, 17400 Wedgewood Avenue, and 17445 Xena Avenue. APNs are 409-18-008-009-010 and 409-31-001. It's an architecture and site application S-25-005, categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Sections 15301, existing facilities, and 15302, replacement or reconstruction. The property owner is Clearview Golf Associates LLC, and the applicant is Andy Kimball. And before the staff report, can I have a show of hands from commissioners who visited the property? And are there disclosures at this time? Commissioner Stump.
I did receive a 30-minute tour from Mr. Kimball at the course.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, yeah, Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, I did receive, I did do a review of the golf course as well, and as well as I did belong to La Rincanada twice. And my son belongs there, but it's not going to affect my decision-making.
And I'll make the same disclosure as Commissioner Stump. Likewise.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay, so we, because this is a, for, to clarify, typically as commissioners, we do not interact with the applicants at all before we have a hearing, other than what we get in our agenda packet. However, because this is a private golf club, we were, you know, we needed permission to be able to view the full site. And so Mr. Kimball was the person, our contact person. So that's why we're making these disclosures. So thank you. Okay, Mr. Safdie, will you be giving our staff report tonight? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for approval of an ARKIN site application for a grading permit associated with a comprehensive redevelopment of the La Rincanada Golf Course with construction of a new restaurant and comfort station, sorry, restroom and comfort station, the removal of hundreds of protected trees, 16 of which are considered large protected. Due to the size of the project, the application is coming before Planning Commission for review. The subject property is a golf course and country club that occupies over 118 acres on the north side of town. The course has been in operation at this location for nearly 100 years and presently includes a full 18-hole golf course, driving range, practice greens, clubhouse, pool, fitness facility, and maintenance facility. The existing conditional use permit applicable for the project would remain complied with with this proposed application in front of you. As noted in the application materials, the country club is pursuing a full-scale redevelopment of the golf course while the driving range, clubhouse, pool, and other facilities would remain untouched. The existing 18-hole layout would be slightly modified in terms of the locations of each hole and would include a refined, or refined fairway contours, new bunkers, new greens throughout the course, a slight modification to the existing water features, as well as some new cart paths and a new entry drive off of Clearview. On top of that, as mentioned previously, there's a new proposed 250-square-foot restroom and comfort station, which would be added towards the center of the property between holes 10 and 18 roughly. To facilitate the coursework, the associated site grading work triggers the need for a grading permit, which is one of the reasons for the ARKIN site application. As a total of over 52,000 cubic yards would be moved. However, no off-haul or importing of native soil is anticipated, so they're planning to balance it all on-site. In addition to the grading, the applicant is proposing extensive tree removals to facilitate this project. In addition to trees immediately adjacent to the proposed work, which would be impacted thus causing the removal, trees are also proposed for removal to widen the fairways and allow enough sunlight for the new drought-tolerant Bermuda grasses, as well as their arborists identified an additional 47 trees as being a hazard and requiring, requiring removal for safety purposes. It's worth noting that the town's consulting arborist reviewed this arborist report at cost by the applicant and confirmed with all of the determinations made. The existing site contains over 1,200 trees, and the applicant is proposing to remove 287 of them. As noted previously, 16 of these trees proposed for removal are considered large protected, 14 of which are eucalyptus trees, which are known to be a fire risk. Town code requires tree replacements for each protected tree proposed for removal. And in this case, the 287 trees proposed for removal requires a total of 977 24-inch box trees to be replanted or 489 36-inch box trees. For each of the 977 24-inch box trees not planted, town code allows the applicant to pay an in-lug fee to cover the cost. And that in-lug fee goes towards the town's tree replacement fund. The applicant's proposing a reforestation plan that includes replanting 173 new native trees, most of which would be native oak trees. And the majority of these 173 new trees would exceed the town's standard 24-inch or 36-inch box sizes, including 66 48-inch box trees and 26 60-inch box trees. Town code dictates that in terms of replacement requirements, one of these 36-inch box trees equals two 24-inch box trees. However, town code doesn't specify how to treat any box trees exceeding the 36-inch size. The staff report was drafted with the assumption that the Planning Commission had the authority to approve of larger tree replacement species to count more towards the replacement requirements, i.e. a 60-inch box tree counting as four 24-inch box trees. However, after further consideration and consultation with the town attorney, it has been determined that the replacement standards were set forth in Table 3.1 of Town Code 29100985. And therefore, Planning Commission cannot approve the request of replacement exception without a variance application. So therefore, if the Planning Commission were to approve this project tonight, condition of approval number eight in Exhibit Three should be modified to state something along the lines of new trees shall be planted or in-lug fees paid at a rate as required by Town Code Section 29100985. The trees proposed to remain on the site will be protected as noted in the project plans, and conditions of approval seven and nine reflect that. A detailed SEQA memorandum was prepared by the applicant and is provided as Exhibit Nine, which included a noise study, construction emissions and health risk assessment, and a biology report. The background SEQA studies show that with the implantation of draft conditions of approval, the project would be categorically exempt from SEQA. Several public comments have been received for this project, as I'm sure you're aware, which are included in Exhibit 12 of the staff report. Additional public comments, as well as the applicant's response to the first batch of public comments, was provided yesterday in an addendum report. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chair Birch.
Is the town arborist here to answer questions if we have any?
The town arborist is not here, but we did meet with him and discuss with him before tonight.
Okay.
Commissioner Stump.
Mr. Safdie, you talked about a variance required because we could not make a judgment based on what's on Page Six of the staff report related to replacement calculation. And so whether that's you or perhaps Ms. Whelan, could you explain what that variance process is? What it would be if the applicant wanted to pursue variance?
Yeah, so if the applicant decided to pursue this variance, they would have to resubmit a variance application and then come back before Planning Commission and make the required state findings. Speaking with the applicant team today, and they can confirm during their presentation, they are prepared to agree with staff's recommended condition to meet the Town Code and move this project forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Okay.
I have, I have one. So the variance requirement is triggered because we don't have standards for the larger trees that are proposed to be planted?
I can address that. So the town has a section in the Town Code that addresses tree protection. And there's a section which is Section 29100985. And it has a table that contains the replacement standards. And it provides that the replacement standards for trees greater than 55 feet, the replacement options are either 10 24-inch box trees or five 36-inch box trees. And if it's not possible to plant that number of trees, the director can approve a combination of replacement trees and payment of an in-lug fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. We, okay, thank you for all of that. And we probably will have more questions later. But first, we, I will invite the applicant team. We will, we're now opening the public portion of this hearing on item number three, or four, and, or, yeah, three, sorry. And give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. I have three different cards for the applicant. Just like last time, you will have five minutes to start, and you can split up that time however you want. So please go ahead and come up to the podium and introduce yourselves. And we'll go.
If the staff could bring up a presentation on the monitor before time begins. My name's Bob Ryland, and I'm the president of La Rincanada Country Club. And I want to thank the commission for allowing us to present our project plan in front of you today. First, I would like to ask our sponsor, our supporters. All have green stickers on. If you could please stand up. As you can see, we have a lot of support for this project. Thank you, you may be seated. Next slide, please. La Rincanada Country Club was founded in 1929. We've been in, we've been in the town for almost 100 years and been one of the most, in, one of the longest enduring institutions in, in the town. We have over 541 members. And over 250 of those members, our families, have actually lived in the town of Los Gatos. The club has been, has deep ties to both the neighborhood and the town. The neighborhood actually grew up around the golf course. And one of the things that we're very proud of is that we're stewards of one of the largest private open spaces in the town of Los Gatos. Next, next slide, please. We've spent the last four years thoughtfully planning for our next 100 years focusing on three key goals. The first is modernization. The project modernizes aging infrastructure and improves our operating efficiency both economically and environmentally. Second is sustainability. We want to make the entire property less reliant on water by reducing our water consumption by over 30%. And last is safety. To say it plainly, we have a failing tree problem. It's a major safety risk that we need to address while also improving our fire resiliency. Now, let me introduce Andy Kimball, our general manager, who will explain how we will take these goals and turn them into reality.
Thank you, Bob, and good evening, commissioners. Next slide, please. Okay, in simple terms, we're proposing a generational landscape restoration and infrastructure renovation of our property. It's a $20 million investment that's entirely funded by our membership. The photo simulations show the new course, which we want to look and play much like it was originally intended back in 1929. Next slide, please. The project timeline is relatively short, with the course being closed for 12 to 14 months, while all our other club facilities remain open. We plan to start construction- We plan to start construction in March and work on each hole for three to four weeks, minimizing neighbor inconvenience. The construction will take approximately seven to eight months, followed by a five-to-six-month growing period, with the course reopening in the first half of 2027. Next slide, please. The lynchpin of our plan is a conversion to the drought-tolerant Bermuda grass, which will reduce our annual water consumption by 30 million gallons of water a year. This new grass requires much more sunlight than we have on our current turf. An abundance of overgrown trees shading turf must be addressed for this plan to be successful. We've proposed tree removals for both health and safety reasons, and also to achieve our water savings goals. Forecasted future irrigation reductions will likely stress non-native trees, resulting in potentially dangerous failures. To that end, our tree plan accounts for both current and future concerns. As of today, we have 1,200 trees on our property. After planting 173 mature native trees during the construction, the course will end up with nearly 1,100 trees. While unique for the town, this plan is not unique for our industry. Several courses locally and throughout the state have undertaken similar initiatives, including substantial non-native tree removal with local government support. Next slide, please. The club has worked hard over the years to be a good neighbor, and we intend to continue these efforts. Back in January of this year, we started a comprehensive community outreach program, engaging our local community in an open dialogue. We created a dedicated webpage and contacted over 800 residents within a half-mile of the club, mailing each home at least twice. We held six open house events to discuss the project details with anyone interested in the project or its impact on their residents. We've had more than 50 individual contacts, and the proposal was warmly received by everyone that took the time to discuss the details with us. Next slide, please. We want to highlight the coalition of neighbors and members who co-signed a letter asking the town to tee up a greener future for golf in Los Gatos. The club was pleased to see that more than 100 residents, many of whom live near the golf course, have formally endorsed our plan. Next slide, final slide. Lurin Canata requests that the commission approve the project application as recommended by the staff in their report.
Good job. Okay, so, reminder, I know that was impressive, but please remain quiet in the audience. Thank you. So, we will now take public comments. Oh, are there, sorry, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker, or the applicant team at this time? No, okay. We will take comments from the public. So again, if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak on Item 3, now is the time to raise your hand. If you are in the chambers, then I will, and you have filled out a card, I will call your name, and you can come up. Similar to our last agenda item, I have a lot of cards, and I know a lot of you are here, and we appreciate it, and to get your name on the public record and show your support or not, it is important for you to come up and speak. However, you don't have to take your three minutes. So, if you want to say, you know, "I support what the last person said," or "And I have additional information that I would like to share," and/or if you have three minutes of new information, that is also fine, too. So, I will just start with my first card, which is Kristin Lamson. Kristin, thank you. So you can come up, state your name. Like I said, you will have three minutes, and just, I know that it's hard, but if I could just remind everyone again to not make any noise. Thank you. Relax about it. Just, yeah, thank you.
We're a very well-behaved bunch. My name is Kristin Lamson. I've lived in Los Gatos for 30 years, raised our children here. Our families went to Los, our kids went to Los Gatos schools. I'm a member of Lurin Canata, and I am speaking in support of the project. Lurin Canata is regarded by many as one of the finest and well-known open spaces in Los Gatos, and there are many reasons to approve the project, including, "This is an important and necessary course modernization and sustainability plan. Water usage is reduced by more than 30% by replacing the existing grass with a drought-tolerant variety. Native trees better suited for our climate will replace unsafe, aging, and non-native trees. Over 100 local neighbors, many of whom live near the golf course, endorse the project. The plan proposes no new growth. It is simply a landscape redesign and infrastructure rebuild. Club members are investing over $20 million in the course, ensuring its viability for generations to come. And not only is significant money being invested, but countless hours have been spent, years have been spent talking to consultants, researching the best thing to do, and this is the plan that has arisen. It is the right plan. Dozens of courses throughout California have followed the exact same improvement process supported by local governments who recognize the long-term environmental and safety benefits. There is some opposition to the project. By a MoveOn.org petition, the petition contains inaccurate information, and additionally, all demands listed in the petition have been met. So, I feel it should not be relevant to your decision. After writing and reviewing these remarks, I feel even more strongly that this project makes so much sense. It is the best choice for the property, the environment, the town, and its residents. Please approve the project as requested. Let's work together to support greener golf in Los Gatos." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, I have Brad Krauskup.
My name is Brad Krauskup. My wife Dana and I have been in Los Gatos, or been Los Gatos residents for 40 years, and members of Lurin Canata Country Club for the last five years. The project before you is a result of four years of intense work, interacting not only with Lurin Canata members, but also adjoining neighbors. In my view, this project is about the sustainability of one of the larger open spaces in our town. Reducing water consumption by 30 million gallons a year is a good thing. Planting native drought-tolerant oak trees is a good thing, and reducing fire danger, certainly in the environment we live in today, and improving safety is a good thing. When the project is complete, over 1,100 trees will remain on the property, a reduction of less than 10% from the existing inventory. The reforestation of Lurin Canata will be more drought-tolerant and more sustainable for generations to come. Please join the town's planning staff, the professional consultants reviewing the project, and the overwhelming majority in attendance tonight in supporting the project. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service to our town.
Thank you. Questions? Next speaker I have is Ed Hofer.
Hello, my name's Ed Hofer, and my wife Amy and I have been residents of Los Gatos for the last 15 years, and members of Lurin Canata for eight years. And my comments will be brief. I just think that as a member, what I've written is that our board and the design team have put together a very thoughtful proposal that really emphasizes sustainability. And in fact, from the way I saw it, that was one of the primary drivers for this in the beginning, was just to save water, which is, you know, a critical aspect, we know, given the climate change in California. And I think it's the right thing for the club. The other thing, as a member, that I observed that I thought was very noteworthy is that on our vote to approve the plan, and it's no light assessment of the membership, it's a pretty significant amount of money every member's asked to spend. We had, I think, over 71% approval, and I think a lot of that was really people understanding the need for sustainability and looking to the future as what the right step for the club was. So, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Questions? The next speaker I have is Greg Simpson.
Hello, I'm Greg Simpson. I'm resident here in Los Gatos for almost 20 years, have been a member up at Lurin Canata for over 10, here to support, throw my support for the project. Of course, agree with the points being made. Couple other points, just two of the biggest issues, obviously, in our state, water and fire. And the redwood trees on the course were planted generations ago by Lurin Canata members because it was a short-term solution. They grow fast, and they line the golf courses, but there was no long-term view, and they're not sustainable. They didn't worry about water, it wasn't an issue back then, but now it is. Each tree can take up to 500 gallons of water per day to keep the redwood trees, and we have to irrigate those. So, that's, now with the new Bermuda grass, we're not going to have as much water, it's not as healthy for the trees, so redwood trees aren't native, they're native up in Santa Cruz Mountains, where they get all their water from the fog. And the eucalyptus trees, high fire. You look up eucalyptus trees, high fire. The oil in the trees, the leaves, they shoot up, they explode. So, it's helping our community of two of the biggest issues. And I love the transparency that we've done for four years with the community, not only our members, but everybody surrounding, being extremely transparent with what we're doing. Thank you for your support, and for the community, and for supporting this project.
Thank you. Next, I have Ty Hecky.
Good evening, commissioners. This is my first time to one of these meetings, but I feel it's very interesting, by the way. Thank you for giving us some time here. This is very important to me. My family's been in Los Gatos for 30 years. Conservation is a key pillar of my character, and I don't want to get into my golf game, per se, but even the Bermuda grass, I don't have a good short game. The Bermuda grass could actually be worse for my short game, but I am still recommending that we do it for the 30 to 40, not that bad of my golf game, 30 to 40 million gallons. To be serious, it's very important. Yeah, I'm not going to hold anything, my son's marine biologist, all about the environment. So, I felt like I would come here tonight for my first time and just share my views. I appreciate you listening. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you. Next, I have Mike Gallagher.
This is also my first time at one of these meetings, and it's great to see you guys. I can't believe you sit through this. Week after week, month after month, I realize the clock is running. Mike Gallagher, 14580 Clearview Drive. We live directly across from the entrance to Lurin Canata. We've been in Los Gatos for 25 years, 17 years of which we've been members at Lurin Canata. My wife would be here, but she's watching our granddaughter tonight, and that may seem irrelevant, but I think this is actually a generational kind of project. When these trees and when this golf course was formed 96 years ago, none of us were there, but we're benefiting today. And I think that this plan, that's been really thoughtfully put together, is going to impact long beyond when all of us are members or even in Los Gatos. I think the water savings is the key thing, 30% savings, and in order to do that, you have to make some changes to the trees. There are, you know, it's easy to sort of dismiss the safety issue, but I can tell you that, you know, about, I don't know, about a year ago, I was on the fourth hole, and a eucalyptus tree dropped a branch that was, you know, bigger than this easel in terms of its width, you know, right down on a cart path. And I used to work for a lady from Australia, and she says, "In Australia, where they're native, eucalyptus trees are called dead man trees." And so, they're not native here, and it'll be great to get rid of as many of them as they're in the plan. So, I would urge you to support the project. Over 70% of the members, one of the biggest turnouts, supported this. In terms of the neighbors, I've talked to a lot of the neighbors about this, and I have to tell you that probably out of dozens of neighbors I've spoken to, I have found one person that is opposed to it, just one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Dennis McAvoy.
My name's Dennis McAvoy. My wife and I have lived in Los Gatos for 44 years, and we've been members at Lurin Canata Country Club for over 20 years. We all know that the climate in Los Gatos is warmer, and this is true throughout the West. There are more frequent droughts, and water is more scarce than it was 100 years ago when this golf course was first built, and 35 years ago when it was first remodeled. So, the choices that were made at that time are no longer suitable for the climate that we live in now, and we don't expect the climate to get any wetter in the future. The result of this is that the cool-seasoned grasses that are planted, perennial and annual rye grass, need an inordinate amount of water in the summertime to keep them alive and green. It's also true that the non-native trees that were planted need a similar inordinate amount of water to keep it alive, because they weren't really naturally growing here. So, this plan, which has been stated as quite comprehensive, addresses this by putting a warm-seasoned grass on 40 acres of the property, significantly reducing the amount of water that's needed during the summertime. And it also replaces many, but not all, of the non-native trees that require water with the native oak trees that are, in fact, are native to this area and will thrive in the warmer climate. So, I would request that you support the recommendations of the staff and of the two arborists who have reviewed this project and grant us approval for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ted Baumiller.
Thank you for your time. My name's Ted Baumiller, and I've lived seven minutes from Los Gatos, or from Lurin Canata Country Club for the last 25 years, and been a member since 2005. My wife's parents lived in Montessorino and joined Lurin Canata in 1968, and she has been enjoying this beautiful community her entire life. My children love this club, and they play golf. One of them is a D1 golfer, who learned most of what he knows here at Lurin Canata. I want their children to play here. And as Mike mentioned, I believe this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity that can make this happen. The irrigation system at Lurin Canata has failed, and I, too, have personally seen significant tree branches fall while I've been playing golf. The amount of resources that are required to keep this property in a sustainable environment needs an upgrade. We've talked a lot about sustainability tonight, and I believe that reducing 30 million gallons of water is an obligation that we have. It's not an opportunity. I didn't get a chance to think that I was going to get to take credit for these stickers, but if you see all these stickers that says "I support greener golf in Los Gatos," and we all do, and every one of us here tonight are wearing these stickers, and we truly believe that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Lotus Mahon.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Dr. Lotus Mahon. My doctorate is, I'm a dentist. I also have a degree in Bachelor of Science from UC Berkeley in Biology of Renewable Natural Resources. This was brought to me as only focusing on the removal of trees. I support changing the lawn, putting in the drought-tolerant grasses, and I would also support removing eucalyptus trees that are non-native and known to be, for lack of a better word, torches. But I don't support removing mature old-growth trees. It has taken them decades to grow, and replacing them will also take decades. Larger trees contribute, they clean a lot of the toxins and pollutants out of the air, and they remove a lot of the carbon dioxide, and they present, they contribute a lot of oxygen. And biologically speaking, that's the other half of us, that's our lungs. We bring in, we breathe in oxygen and give off carbon dioxide, and they take in carbon dioxide and give out oxygen. And replacing them takes decades and decades and decades. In terms of previous, the trees that are there that are old-growth, mature trees, they've already survived many, many, many decades of drought. So, how much water each individual tree takes compared to the lawn and the other things, I don't know that they are the ones that are consuming all the water. Let's see, number three. In addition, they provide sound dampening, and they also provide a lot of habitat for wildlife. wildlife. We know that we're diminishing songbirds and when we take a lot of the, when we change their habitat, it takes a long time for them to repopulate or they're lost. So in support of, I've already said the portions of it that I support with, but I don't support the removal of the old growth, mature trees. I just don't think you can quickly replace those. I do support oak trees. They would be great, but they're not going to come, they're not going to grow very fast. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? I think Ms. Mahon, there is a question from Commissioner Burnett.
Yes, if you would please. So I'm interested in your comment about the sound issue. Would the removal of those trees present a sound problem for your residents?
I live at 145 LLTO and in Los Gatos and that's in the Rincanada Hills. So all of the trees do. I used to live in downtown Los Gatos on University Avenue and for a while in Creekside Village. And as they've removed trees for various projects, the sound of the freeways have come through. The trees are really good at blocking the sound waves from coming through and keeping a much calmer, quieter environment.
If I may, I understand your concern, but what I'm trying to get to is, are you concerned about the neighbors to the golf course or your personal peace and quiet?
Neither. I just think they have a good sound dampening effect and I like to see that in the environment because that's the way nature created it.
I see. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next I have Lisa Seibert. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission and all. I'm here to address the proposed removal of 287 mature trees, an irreversible action on the La Rincanada Golf Course. The issue warrants a thorough fact-based review of the construction and design proposal, including the environmental impact report to ensure legal compliance and ecological preservation. First, I've submitted a petition to the town with 113 signatures on moveon.org, which was only issued to the people in the Rincanada area. So they are relevant. To use a golf analogy for this project, the ball keeps moving. The project began with 190 trees being removed and then 240, but now it's 287, not counting the 12 massive redwoods that were illegally cut down by the club without a Los Gatos Town permit or notification of the members. In the past two years, many trees have been disappearing on the golf course. Secondly, the numerous trees targeted for removal are classified as large protected trees by the Town of Los Gatos. Under California law, removal of such trees is highly restricted unless clear legal exemptions are granted in the town. Is the town considering granting La Rincanada an exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act? Multiple environmental agencies have fought and been victorious against the violation of the CEQA. Formal objections to the plan citing potential lawsuits and environmental risk, including loss of canopy growth, which purifies the air and as Lotus mentioned, acts as, releases carbon whenever one of those large trees is, is cut down. All the carbon that's been stored in those trees is released in the atmosphere. Furthermore, it reduces shade, increases pollutants and noise levels. I've been told one mature tree increases the sound from three to eight decibels. Wildlife displacement, birds pollinators and small animals need to find a new home. Increase fire risk and heat. Soil degradation and runoff, public health consequences, trees improve mental health to all. The town should consider, is there an alternative to, an alternative design that eliminates removing all of these large protected trees, especially the redwoods? The reason the club gives for asking to remove these trees is to save water. But the Los Gatos Town Arborist, Rob Moldor, specifically stated, "The coastal redwoods survive in this area because of the coastal fog." And to quote him, he said, "Don't let anyone tell you otherwise." Who waters their trees?
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, the time is up, but do we have any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next I have Jeff Gallinott? Sorry. Gallinott? Yeah. I'm on a roll, just practicing for school this week.
Hi, I'm, I am Jeff Gallinott. I'm a, been a resident of Los Gatos for over a decade, a member of La Rincanada for over a decade, and I served on its board now for five years. So I've been there since the outset of all of this. I want to emphasize a few points that have been made already. One is, the plan that you see today is the very best work of a lot of people over a very, very long time. We've all invested in that plan and we believe, we're proud of it. We think that plan is comprehensive. We think it's fact-based. We think it's balanced and it's fully integrated. That was our objective. The team that built that plan is a very cross-functional team that has a lot of skills in it. We have a preeminent experienced golf course designer, several different experts, specific experts, engineers and other specialists. We have the two arborists that have been referenced a couple of times that collaborated and helped us align our reforestation plan. And we have many of our members involved as well. Couple of other things you may not know is that to, to make sure that we're successful, we've actually engaged and selected the very best golf construction company in America. And the reason we chose to do that is not just time, but because they have practices in the most advanced techniques to ensure that the project runs in the way it's been described by Andy and with limited environmental disruption. We could have taken many different approaches to this and we thought of many. But the reason you see the plan you do today is it's governed by the opportunity that many people here have expressed today. It's an opportunity to not only retrofit and renovate the property, but to create a sustainable solution that we can be proud of, that reduces not only water, but chemicals. And it also has a reforestation plan that puts more native trees on the property. And as is referenced before, leaves us with over a thousand trees there. We've held hundreds and hundreds of meetings with our members, with neighbors and with many of the people in this room. And we did all of that before we came to you with this plan. And now we will hope that you will see what are, most of our members, almost all of the neighbors and what, what we've seen. And that is, we see a plan that is going to seize on a generational opportunity to transform a beautiful asset. We see a plan that's going to provide increased value, not only to our members, but to the neighbors and to the town. And it's going to provide us a path for a long-term, sustainable future on this beautiful asset for many generations to come. Thank you very much for your consideration and time. We hope you'll support the project.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Next I have Jim Rubenitz? Rub, sorry. It's the, it's the handwriting more than the... But I'm usually good at that too.
What's that?
I said, "I'm good at that too."
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you did a good job. Jim Rubenitz, thanks for having me tonight, Los Gatos homeowner. So far I get the distinction of being the longest member of Rincanada, 30 years. And I'm really not here to speak to what Jeff just finished so eloquently talking about. I'm here to speak about the relationship La Rincanada has with the town. I can tell you personally, as a past president, 12 years ago, I appeared before this commission and the city council on a massive remodel that we did, went through the building department, planning department, public works, and feel quite good about our relationship and the job that was done and the finished product that was done. I also came before this city about five or six years ago with similar plans for kitchen and bar, et cetera. And again, we fulfilled our, our part of the project. This town has been happy. Los Gatos residents have been happy. So what everyone has talked about so far, I've got no doubt that when this project gets completed, the town will be very proud of its finished product. Thank you.
Thank you. The final card that I have is for Scott Lamson. Thank you. If you, yeah, you can just answer to me. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Scott Lamson and I live in Los Gatos as well. And I'm a member of La Rincanada Country Club. And as you probably guess, I'm very strongly supportive of this project. Most of the things people have said, I don't want, need to repeat them all, but there's a couple of items that I want to make sure people understand is it, as La Rincanada's been around for 100 years and we're a pillar of society for the town. There are many numerous events that are held at the club that benefit the community. This, this project is really about long-term sustainability. And we've talked about the water savings. And it's really the removal, and part of that is the removal of non-native trees, which has been fully reviewed and approved by two arborists, including the town arborist. We will remain, it's a reforestation project, there will still be 1,100 trees on the property. And also, the club will be paying substantial in lieu fees and we know we're going to pay them, but we're willing to pay them and move this project forward. It's something that's very important. And let me be clear, this is really not a development project. It involves no changes in the club's conditional use permit. There's no expansion of facilities. There's no increase in membership. It is a landscape and infrastructure modernization, a responsible, well-balanced plan that leaves no import soils, pardon me, involves no import or export soils, minimal grading and no impact to existing facilities. In summary, this is a forward-looking, environmentally responsible project that aligns with the values of Los Gatos and the benefits of the broader community, not just the club members. I respectfully urge you to approve the project as it's been recommended by the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. And I have a card for Sandy Decker.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I am very glad to see you here. You do the job there is to do when it comes to land use in Califor, in this particular area of Los Gatos, which we love in the state of California. This chaparral plant palette, which you've reviewed, is very reminiscent of Southern California. It appears that La Rincanada is heading for Bermuda grass fairways and scrub brush borders with an occasional oak. The members, I know you're ready to support this and you will, but you can imagine the family pictures after your daughter's wedding, standing on a Bermuda grass, a Bermuda grass fairway with bordering deciduous chaparral scrubberies and, as I say, possible occasional oak. Don't completely destroy this urban forest wonderland, which is beautiful and this community has totally believed in and loved for a very long time. There's got to be a better compromise on the destruction of the, of the old oak and the other old growth trees that are being destroyed. Members, please be sure you're getting what you want and what you're paying dearly for. Please require a rendering of what this design will eventually look like. There is no argument about the eucalyptus. They need to be gone. But I do have deep feelings, I think most of us do, for the redwoods. They are California. They have roots that spread out from the trunk, the width of the canopy. They work together. They are a collaborative root system and they will search out the groundwater as well as, as well as the surface water. And they'll stay where they are and they will work well with the reduced number of, of gallons of water that we're talking about. Planning Commission members, your purpose tonight, after reading this amazing and lengthy report, is to decide whether the town's policy for tree removal has been enforced as it should be. This application is filled with exceptions, substitutions and very little compliance. It's something we all want to keep and we want to keep it as beautiful, hopefully in whatever design it might be, as it has been for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. I have a card for Kristi Matheson.
Hello, thank you for having us. My husband and I have been a direct neighbor to La Rincanada Country Club for the past 30 years. For 25 years, we've been members at La Rincanada Country Club. And we are in full support of both the safety, because we've experienced it personally and our friends have experienced it with the trees and the water. And we really hope you support our cause and initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Lorena Chu.
Hello, my name is Lorena Chu. I live at 14599 Clearview Avenue. So we are the right, two-story house right next to the entrance of La Rincanada. My backyard faces the 18th Green. So I just want to get sure that, let you guys know that I am a neighbor. I'm also a member of La Rincanada. And so this plan does impact us greatly. I know a lot of people have talked about the maturity of the trees, but I come from a different perspective, safety. Safety is very important, especially when it comes to these mature trees. A lot of these trees that were identified has already been near the end of their lives. And when they die or they fall over, it's a big hazardous situation. In that case, in June of this year, we had a huge branch from the tree of, like, bordering my backyard and the 18th Green that fell over into our yard, our tennis court and where I actually practice hitting my own golf balls there. And so to me, that's a big issue, right? And so if we have trees falling because of their near this end of life, that's a problem itself. The second thing that I also want to point out, as a neighbor and a member, you know, I know there was a petition that goes about move on. That petition was sent to our neighborhood WhatsApp group chat. Unfortunately, that information was not holistic. They only talked about the 80, 287 trees that are being removed, but they never talked about the fact that there was 176 trees that will be replanted. There will be a lot of things that will be remediated and that is something that I felt like it was not very fact-based. She also did the same thing at Nextdoor group, Nexor app and said the same thing to garner the support itself. I also took this time in this afternoon to look through the public comments. And in her 113 petitions, you know, some of them are in the neighbors, but some of them actually came as far as, we have people from LA and Orange County. I don't know how they are relevant to our town proposal. We have people from Colorado, Washington State, Ohio, Hawaii, and even as far as the Philippines have signed this form. So to me, something that is supposed to be fact-based, legal compliance, we should probably look into the actual petition itself in terms of the validity of the support for this, opposing this project. Again, my husband and I are big, a big supporter of this program and we wish you to be able to approve this request. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more speaker cards. Is there anyone with hands raised on Zoom before we go back?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. So now I will invite the applicant team to come back up. You will have an additional three minutes.
Here we go. Commissioners, I'm Sean Morley with Morley Brothers LLC. Are we ready to go? Yep. Longtime town resident, born and raised here, our business is located here. We're assisting the club in the management of the applications, not a member of the club. Like to respond to some of the comments. Like to respond to some of the comments tonight. First of all, we have submitted a detailed letter responding to a number of the written comments. We've talked a little bit about what the course looked like and what we hope it will look like. It will actually look like, these are renderings made for the members to show exactly what the club will be present, or will be developed as. Picture on the left is a club in 1929, on the first day that golf was played. It is chaparral, there were no redwoods. And I need to just clarify that we are not talking about old growth redwoods or other trees here. The trees that have been proposed for removal have been planted in the 60s and 70s. And we're happy to discuss more questions about that. Next slide. The full environmental effects of the project have been thoroughly and comprehensively studied, including a detailed tree survey, biology, health risk, and noise reports. All of those materials have been available for public review for weeks, if not months. No impacts were identified, so the project will not alter the landscape. It won't hurt air quality, wildlife habitat, or neighborhood character as suggested. And no scientific evidence has been presented to support this, just a lot of opinion. Even the one individual who spoke is not a biologist by profession, only studied it in school, as I think many of us did. It's simply not possible to avoid tree removal and still achieve all of the objectives, including conversion to drought-tolerant grass to save the water, address long-term safety, and maintain the course in competitive play over the years. All of these are appropriate justifications for the application as well as the tree removal. And I would say too, that our application complies with all requirements of the town for the proposal. We are not seeking a variance, staff's comments were correct. We support the staff's recommendations. And finally, the, the club's proposal is not unique. As we heard, courses all over the state of California have gone through very similar exercises. I'm happy to share with you details about those other courses in the area. If you have questions, next slide, please. This is just a before and after showing the shadows and the sunlight. Next slide, please. And we do have a falling risk problem. It is serious. This just shows 10 of the more than 100 slides that have fallen in the last few years on the site. We're lucky no injuries have occurred. It's inevitable that more will fall if we don't prudently manage our future. With that, I'd like to say we respectfully request your approval of the staff recommendation.
Thank you. So I am assuming that we are going to have some questions for the applicant. So typically, just to explain, everyone that is here, this is the time for commissioners to ask clarifying questions and get some more information from the applicant team. And then after that, we'll close the public hearing and have our discussion. So who wants to lead it off? Commissioner Burnett?
I actually have three questions, if I can indulge the chair. The first one, I'd like to ask staff to address the CEQA issue that was brought up. I understand there was a CEQA. Oh, I'm sorry, that hasn't been done? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My bad. I apologize.
Do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? No? Okay. Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Birch?
Obviously, there's a lot of discussion around the current plan and the tree removal. And I think it would help me a bit if you could walk through, I assume you went through a number of iterations of this design to come up with the one you have. And maybe you could kind of share what, a little bit of that process and how you landed on this? So on our side, we can understand that this was really vetted.
Yeah. Andy, I'm gonna let you handle that question. Andy and I'll tag team back and forth on some of your questions depending on it, but he's better on the design.
So from the design perspective, we, the board, or the committee and I, group of, a group of members took a year to vet and search out an architect. We landed on Todd Eckenrode, who is, his specialty is restoration and sustainability. So we were very specific on who we were looking for. You know, there's, there's quite a few golf course architects out there. This is probably, as, as we went through the process, we, the interview process, we engaged a number of the architect, the finalists, and they all gave a proposed design as part of our, as part of our selection process. We landed on Todd for a number of reasons. We liked the design, and we really liked the sustainability aspects that he offered. So that was just a year process to get to day one. Then from there, several iterations of the plan, including the grassing, because the grassing was more our choice than the architect's choice. So the grassing plan, the water savings, that, that was all part of the, I guess iterative process of getting to where we landed today. As somebody mentioned before, this is about, we're about four years into this process now. So this isn't just happenstance, this isn't something we just stumbled upon. This has taken a lot of time and effort, and I can attest that myself.
And then just let me also comment about the actual process itself. We actually made some revisions to the plan in the process. Once we filed the application, we dramatically reduced even the grading that was going to be proposed on site, dramatically reducing the amount of grading on the property. And we've made some, which is noted in our response to comment letter that was circulated today on the very last page, we made a number of design adjustments based on individual neighbor feedback that we received.
Can I just go follow up? And to clarify, the Bermuda grass that you're proposing to use, because it does reduce the water demand, is pretty sensitive to shade, in my understanding?
It is, yes. So we've, as part of our, our process with the, with testing grasses, Kevin Breen here is our golf course superintendent. He's been with us for 12 years about. One of the best in the business, we've done several trials around the property. We've done trials in shade, we've done trials to see the, to test the tolerances. We, I have photographs in my computer that show, especially in winter months, low, low-level sun angles that it does not perform. And so we have the opportunity to open windows, which is all we're doing. This isn't a clear-cut type of thing. We're opening windows for specific sunlight to impact the grass and really make it work.
I'll pick it up from here. A number, this is not unique to Los Gatos or the course. Many, many courses through the Bay Area have gone through this exact step where they've made the switch to reunogras for the same reasons. They have gone through a prudent, although I would say much more aggressive, tree removal. Happy to walk through some of those courses around here and those particular numbers if anybody's interested. It is a, a practice throughout California too. People are moving just to recognize the new realities of water use. And so Bermuda grass is the way you do it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. Visiting the course and going down to the driving range, I was shown a couple of trees that had been planted that would be the replacement tree. And actually, it was very nice trees. I believe they were oak trees. Could you tell me the size they were? Because they were quite a tall tree already. And I know you had planted them to see how quickly.
Coincidentally, we have a picture of that in our deck.
Yes.
It was a slide I didn't show because it's irrelevant now related to the credits. But if you could bring up the very last slide, that would be helpful.
I think that's an important visual.
Just for what you'll be previewing, it is a 40-inch, 48-inch box tree, so not the biggest that we will be planting. It was planted a year ago. Keep going, I'm sorry, go back up two. Down one, right there. Tree on the left, disregard the table, it's not relevant to this conversation anymore. It's a 48-inch box that was planted in 2024. It's in, within a center part of a golf cart area. It's very, very tall, it's not the biggest that we'll be planting. 60-inch boxes are actually much larger than this, and this one's just one year old.
Yes, actually, I was very impressed by that tree. But I did want to ask, so my understanding, there will be, all the redwoods will be removed? Is that what we're saying?
Actually, no, there are quite a few redwoods that are being retained.
Oh, okay, great.
There are a number of redwoods being removed, but not all of them. Likewise, while the vast majority of eucalyptus are being removed, not all of them are being removed. And we, we, the application was modified in the last submitted to increase the number of trees from 240 to 287 at the recommendation of the project arborist, as well as the consulting arborist. I also wanted to note too, that the town arborist, there was a comment made about the town arborist's position on redwoods in this project. Those are not part of the project recommendation, and I think was, shouldn't be relied on. However, we are, you know, prudently designing, so, and again, most of the trees on the property are being retained.
Can I just follow up a question? So where, the redwood trees that you are saving, where, where would they be on the course?
They are detailed throughout the application, and they are, they're essentially, redwoods are throughout the property. They are, but they are removed in some areas as detailed in the plans that we can certainly ask staff to bring up in those, some of those instances. So there are, there are some clusters of redwoods, and in some of those instances, certain of the trees are being removed to create more sunlight opportunities. But even some of the other redwoods in that area are being retained.
Thank you for that. I think that's an important feature.
Thank you. Any other commissioners already?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that. And I guess if it's possible to get a sense of the percentage of the canopy of the redwoods that are being removed, so we know that 150 out of 287 are coarse redwoods, it looks like. Is there any sense of like how many stay, so we can get a sense of how much?
Yeah, let me, if you go to the very last slide, we can actually show you the table, and I'll pull it up here. And our arborist is here who can clarify if need be, but I think we have it to keep going.
Sorry, yeah, you can take, if you, you can take the microphone with you if you want to point to anything.
There either, hold on. Lisa, where you at? 211, redwoods are being retained on site, 150 proposed for removal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Range of canopy sizes.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, I, sorry, you're not off the hook. I have, I have a handful of questions.
Okay. We're happy to answer all of them.
So let me see. Okay, so first, are you still planning on planting the, those 60-inch box trees, even though they will not count towards the replacements?
It's part of the application. It was obviously news to us that the mission didn't have the obligation. It is still part of the plan.
Okay. Obviously, that, I mean, that might require some approval from the, your, you know, from the board or something to spend that, because it will be additional cost because of the in lieu fees, I understand, so.
The budget for the project presumes those trees are going to be included at those sizes. We assumed that we might be able to seek a reasonable credit for the additional sizes. That is obviously not an option without filing additional applications. We, we haven't considered that, but the application currently includes those large boxes. And I think it's fair to say that's the, club's plan is to continue to maintain that, notwithstanding the fee issue.
Okay, thank you. And then there are a number, or a few, at least, eucalyptus trees that I saw in the arborist report that are in poor condition and are not being removed. Can anyone speak to that reason?
There's a few of them that I'm aware of that are interlaced with oaks. So it's not, it's, we're just leaving the entire environment untouched.
Okay. That makes sense, because they're in, they were listed as very poor condition, but then not for removal, but.
It would be really difficult to.
Yeah. Okay. So you'll just wait for those to croak and then.
The course spends a lot of time, energy, and money maintaining the urban.
Yeah.
Forest.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then for the new, the new oak tree, obviously, a lot of new oak trees would be, you know, are, would be planted if this is approved, so.
It's 91 out of the 173 are proposed to be.
Yeah. So what's really the plan for managing the watering needs of the grass, but also protecting those new oaks? Because that, you know, can, and even the ones that already exist there with some of the changes to the course.
You can actually overwater an oak.
Yeah.
And one of the challenges with the existing grass is it requires significant watering. And so in one instance, it helps redwoods grow, and in the other instance, it hurts oaks. Our irrigation system that's failing. The new system that will be put in will have designated areas, just like you might in a yard, for different, and it's a much, much more sophisticated watering system that will avoid essentially overwatering of trees in particular areas. But fundamentally, less water, better for oaks.
Thank you for clarifying that. And the, one of, another question I have is, I saw on the landscape plans that there's some of the, a plan for some of the turf conversion to native grass. Can someone speak more to the details of that? And like what, how much of that will actually be planted?
I, I don't have the acreage off the top of my head, but it's, so we're taking a number, I think we're currently at 27 acres of fairway grass, which is rye grass. We're going to 40 acres. So we're significantly increasing the amount of fairway grass. The native, native grasses that we're selecting are going to be closer water requirement to the low water requirement Bermuda. So we can, we'll have the ability to spot, irrigate things, but they're going to be a blend of native fescues.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just say on that point, it's, obviously, the greens are going to be a different kind of grass as well.
Yes, yes. Okay. So I think that my final question is that you obviously are proposing to remove many redwood trees. Are you, do you have a plan for what you would actually do with some of that wood afterwards? Is there a way perhaps that you're going to actually reuse that on site? Or anything like that?
So we have not gone into specific details with our contractor yet about how the wood might be repurposed. It is very common for contractors to, just as a practical matter, and then the club would encourage this, to find ways to use it as opposed to just disposing, selling it in a number of different ways for other important uses in the community. And we certainly are happy to, you know, brief staff and report back to you and how the contractor, you know, will ultimately do that. But it's pretty common practice.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry, I've just been informed that it is actually already part of the construction plan.
So is it, but is any of that going to be used on site? Or, I mean, I'm just asking as a.
Some of it, some of it will, although we just don't have a lot of structures.
Yeah.
There will be some, some of it will be milled and some, you know, it will be utilized. It won't be just trashed. We'll be using quite a bit on site for mulch, native and mulch areas as well.
Okay.
However, since we only have one small building, they're just, we wouldn't be converting it for what otherwise would be construction purposes on site.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I think that, let me see if I have any more. I think that's it. Does anyone have any additional questions? Okay. So we will. Thank you very much, and thank you for answering all those questions. We will now close the public portion of the hearing on item number three. And I invite commissioners to ask questions of staff and make a motion at some point and discuss. I do have a question of for staff, just to, to start off, if that's okay. When, if a architecture and site application is approved, how much of the landscape plan can change without having to resubmit? can change without having to resubmit or?
Thank you for the question. Director Paulson, if I get this wrong, please jump in. But essentially, most arc and site applications don't actually even have a landscape plan. They'll show us tree locations. This is a little bit different of an animal in that it's, it's not something I'm sure any of you have seen before. So it is anticipated that there's probably going to be slight changes to locations of trees and maybe one species changing here or there, but it's ultimately going to be up to the director if we think it's a substantial change in the approved plans.
And just to add on, so, again, to Mr. Safdie's point, it really depends on the scope. You know, if there's a wholesale scope of, you know, grading or trees, as was mentioned, then we would evaluate that in consultation with the town attorney to see whether or not that needs to come back.
And would it be appropriate for us to add an additional condition of approval to ensure that specific parts of that landscape plan are followed through with if we feel like that's important in determining our decision tonight?
If the majority believes that that's important, sure, that's always possible. I just caution you that, given the scope of this and the fact that staff, along with the planning commissioners, have not undertaken a project of this nature, you might be creating an issue that might be, become a problem down the road.
Yes, I'm thinking more of like, no less than the percent of, you know, native coverage that they're proposing in the, not even related to the trees, but the other landscaping perhaps. Because I know that, for example, in our area, a lot of the plants that are on the list of drought tolerant are not native and it seems like this is a priority for this area to really be kind of restoring it in that way. So, something more along those lines, I was thinking. Okay. Great, thank you for answering those questions and I ask if anyone else has questions for staff. Commissioner Burnett?
Yeah, my apologies again for jumping the gun. So I'd like staff to address the issue of SEQA since it was brought up. I know it's addressed in the staff report, but it would perhaps be of benefit to the assembled members to have some additional insight on that. Thank you.
Yeah, so with this application, the applicant actually went and hired a SEQA consultant to prepare that background study and a memorandum explaining what the consultant's professional opinion would be on what categorical exemptions to use and then staff reviewed that and agreed with what was determined.
Thank you. I think I'll defer my other two questions or withdraw them. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for staff at this time or just Vice Chair Birch?
I think for just clarification and based on the way some of the conversation went today, could you just differentiate between what is a large protected tree versus just a standard tree being removed? What is that distinction?
Thank you for the question. So ultimately, it does depend on the actual species and so I believe Mr. Paulson's looking it up right now. Has to do with the diameter width of different ones.
We can get back to it after a couple of the questions if you want.
I think I found it. Okay, so the Tree Protection Ordinance defines large protected tree as any oak, California buckeye, or Pacific madron, which has a 24-inch or greater diameter, or any other species of tree with a 48-inch or greater diameter.
Okay, so to clarify, redwoods are not on that list, right? I didn't hear you say it, but I just want to double check because I know those have been part of our conversation.
So a redwood that had a 48-inch or greater diameter would qualify.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone, Vice Chair, or Commissioner, let's, wishful thinking, no, I'm just kidding. Commissioner Raspe?
I don't have any questions, but if you like, I can kind of start the ball rolling on discussion. First off, I, like our last applicants, I want to thank this applicant for, again, their extraordinary preparation and for their neighborhood outreach. It's clear you've worked exhaustively to reach out to the neighbors, who many of whom are here tonight. And I want to thank everybody in attendance tonight. I know we lost a couple of young kids because we went a little long, but it's great to see this level of neighborhood involvement. So thank you all for your activity and level of interest and participation in this. So when we were presented with this application, really there were four issues presented, that is the grading permit. To me, this seems to be a largely non-issue. We are, I think, or you are rather, moving the exact same amount of earth that you're putting back. It's, it's just moving around the site, but nothing is leaving the site. So to me, the grading permit seems not to be an issue. Replacing existing grass with more drought tolerant grass, which I think is an enviable goal. We have a construction of a 250-foot conference station, which I think, again, is not an issue. And then the large issue is the trees. If my notes are correct, we are, or you're proposing removing 287 trees, 16 of which are large protected, and of the 16 large protected, 14 of those are eucalyptus. You are then re-adding or reintroducing 173 large trees, most of which are oak. So the math seems to be that you have approximately 1,200 trees now and if the project is approved, you'll have nearly 1,100 trees. So, I wasn't a math guy, I went to law school, but I think that is a reduction of less than 10% in the total tree count, which, given the, what the goals are here, the creation of a drought tolerant, water reducing environment, I think the loss of 10% or less of the trees is probably an acceptable cost. I agree with, what I think the chair is alluding to is, I don't want to see this slide any more than it has. I'm, I think comfortable with the level of trees and, that are currently proposed in the current plan and I think it accomplishes the goals which have been stated. And I'm also comfortable with, as we started out in the beginning, staff handling the calculation of the in-lu fees. I think those tasks are better suited to task, to staff in any event. But I think the four goals, the four components of the project are about as well designed as can be done while accomplishing the goals in this and so I am largely in supportive of the project as presented. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I would just like to add on to that and I have, I have a background in environmental science and a master's degree in ecosystem services and I recently, at my day job, which is not this, went through a major, like, construction redevelopment of my large school site in Mountain View and we really missed a huge opportunity to, we had, we had to remove a lot of trees. I, we also have a lot of trees on campus. We didn't have to remove a lot, but there were some that were proposed and our replacement trees were, we planted a lot of non-native plants and although a lot of them are drought tolerant, it was not the best that could have been done. So, as a, you know, environmentalist, I typically, you know, don't love golf courses. I'm not going to lie about that because of the environmental impact. So, when I saw this on our agenda, I just originally was like, oh, this one is going to be, I'm going to have to like really, really put my planning commissioner hat on and like just try and do a really great job of, 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 you know, sticking to what we're supposed to be making our decisions about up here. But then when I read the application, I was just like really excited that something like this was happening in Los Gatos because making these types of decisions isn't always, it's not always black and white and it, and it is really difficult sometimes and a lot of times it takes a lot of money to end up saving more on water and energy in the long run. So, I just want to say from that perspective, I was really glad to see that there will be a lot of oak trees planted as replacements and although I do love coastal redwoods and actually my favorite eco-tone is the, where the redwoods and the oaks meet, that is not this location in Los Gatos. It's right above us, over here. So, I just want to say that I hope that whatever happens with the rest of the landscape, that whoever's making those decisions really leans into planting a lot of native plants because this is a place that could, could be really something very special in that way. And I know that it's a little bit out of our purview to, for me to suggest a condition of approval that you should put more, more of those in, but I just encourage you to, all, as you're making those decisions as a body moving forward, just to really like fight for that because they're just the coolest plants. Anyway, so, needless to say, I do think that, I feel very strongly that I would love to see those 60-inch box trees be eligible replacement trees so that we could guarantee that those would be getting placed. It is disappointing that the way that our ordinance is written, that we can't do that, so that's perhaps something that we need to address in the future. It's very rare, like this has never come up before because 60-inch box trees are huge and very expensive and your average person taking, you know, replacing trees cannot afford to do that on properties, but maybe there needs to, we need to go back and update this ordinance so that this doesn't come up in the future. And I think that the way this project is proposed, I can support it. I do want to echo about the grading. I, it, I find that it was, I could easily make all the findings required, especially to approve that part because it is the shifting of soil on the site. And so I hope that my fellow commissioners feel the same way, but if there's anything else that people would like to say. Yeah, Commissioner Burnett?
Well, I echo those prior, those previous comments and to me, the, this golf course is a unique resource in the town. It provides open space, it provides recreational opportunities, it's used for community projects and if it's not viable, we're going to lose all that. It could deteriorate, age, or become seen as dangerous. So I strongly support the project and also join in my appreciation for the extensive work, expensive and extensive work that's been done to bring us to this day.
Does anyone want to make a motion or a comment? Another comment?
Just another quick comment, I'll be brief. I do support the project. I think that, you know, having seen the plans that were presented in the packet and also the presentation, and there's been a lot of care and thought that's gone into the project. I know that a lot of us think it's a shame to lose coastal redwoods, but you have to be very careful with, with grading. I've been involved in some developments myself in the past where the challenge is really there to save trees, but, you know, you've got a species that's got a shallow root zone that really spreads out laterally and, and when you're doing a lot of grading, you just have to be realistic about trees that you're going to be able to keep and trees that you just have to acknowledge have, you know, are beyond their useful life. So I just appreciate the care that's gone into the design. I think that there was a lot of time and effort put into that and, yeah, just supportive of that.
Chair Stumpf?
I'm also supportive of all the comments that have been made this evening and I also want to say what appreciation we have for the project that's been put forward and the fact that there was such a, an effort to address SEQA when this project ultimately would be considered exempt, but the extensive SEQA work that was done and the analysis that was sponsored by the club says a lot about the applicant.
Vice Chair Birch?
Unless there's more comments, I'll make a go motion. I would like to move that we approve the request for a grading permit and removal of large protected trees associated with the comprehensive redevelopment of the La Rincanada Golf Course on property zoned RC and R-120 located at 14595 Clearview Drive, 17400 Wedgewood Avenue and 17445 Xena Avenue, APNs 409-18008, 00900, 010 and 409-31-001, architectural and site application S-25-005. It's categorically exempt. And I can make the findings that the property, the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of SEQA Section 15301, existing facilities, and Section 15302, replacement or reconstruction, which is in Exhibit 2. Make the finding that the project complies with the objective standards of Chapter 29 of the Town Code zoning regulations as shown in Exhibit 2. May the considerations as required by Section 292150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architectural site application for Exhibit 2 and approve architectural and site application S-25-005 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plans in Exhibit 11. What did I miss?
If I could just add that modification to condition number eight to reflect the changes to the replacement trees?
Yes, so adopted.
And a second, Commissioner Raspe?
All second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, I, I too wanted to add my support and compliment the applicant and all the golfers that supported and put their input into this new golf course. The only question is where are you going to be playing golf for the next year and a half or two? And I know the answer to that, but I think it's a wonderful project and I appreciate all the work you've done and I do support the project.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that it's clear that we can't, that although we would love to require the 60-inch box trees in the conditions of approval, that's not something that is recommended or, or maybe it is? Mr. Safdie?
Just to clarify, you can still require the sizes they're proposing. The piece that we cannot require or allow is that a 60-inch box tree will be treated as more than two 24-inch boxes per the replacement requirement.
Okay.
But I do also believe the applicant verified that they're willing to still plant those tree sizes.
Okay, so, then, yes, like, can we possibly modify this motion to include that the tree replacements be no smaller than what are currently proposed? Is that decent language?
I recommend confirming that that's okay with the applicant.
Okay, can we temporarily open the public comment?
The plan set provides a tree replanting program, very detailed type of tree, size of tree. Our plan is to implement that. There are 15 trees that we have not identified a location for. We may see some differentiation in the type, but we're committed to the sizes.
Okay.
Not on the oaks, on the other ones. There just may be a slight adjustment based on field expectations with the landscape ours. Committed to number of oaks, we're committed to the number of the size. So I think if you were to recommend that substantial compliance with the table in the plan set, we'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's just like we, like Mr. Safdie explained earlier, typically landscape plans aren't really like, but this is an important part of this project.
We have a very detailed landscape plan. We're committed to building what was presented.
Okay, thank you. So can we, okay, perfect, add that. And then, would we also be able to add no less than what the current native, identified native plants are other than, other than the tree, besides the trees, the other landscaping?
May I just say on behalf of the applicant, if you're proposing that we build what is in the plan set and plant what is in the plan set, which is a detailed planting plan, we're committed to doing that. And to the extent that it changes, we would have to demonstrate substantial compliance or the planning director would bring us back to you. So hopefully.
Yeah, but, yes, I understand, it's just that typically landscape plans like aren't, aren't on the town's end or not actually that binding, so you could, I know you don't intend to.
No, no, it's not that we intend to. The, the actual recommendation and motion that was just made incorporated the plan set. We're proposing to landscape architect design, build exactly the planting plan in the plan set, which includes the natives that you're looking for.
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Safdie, what kind of language would you put that? I watched you guys confer for a second, so I'm wondering how we're deciding that.
So, as of right now, I've got two.
As of right now, I've got two separate changes to the conditions. There's the one we talked about regarding condition approval number eight, and that's the ratio requirement. And then I'm going to add a condition and it'll say something along the lines of the landscape plans shall be in substantial compliance with the plans that were presented and approved by Planning Commission on so-and-so date.
Perfect. That's great, then yes, I adopt that into the motion.
And the second, or, okay, great. Further discussion, Commissioner Stumpf.
This is a bit of a nit, but I'm all for oversight, but I'm not for over oversight. I really feel that they've committed to a program, they've got a landscape plan. It's in the best interest of their golf course to implement that plan. So I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not going to vote no based on this being put in there. But I do think we've got an organization that is going to follow through with what their commitments are. So I don't know that we need to overlay this on top of them. At that said, if it goes in, I will still be a yes vote.
No, I'm still going to keep it in.
Okay, I think that just, I also believe that this is authentic. But I know that we have, things can change and there have been approvals with landscape plans in the past and then something completely different ends up happening. And so I don't believe that that will happen, but I would like to ensure that it won't happen. So that's where I'm coming from, but I believe you guys. Okay, so no further discussion. I will call the question, all those in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. And are there, thank you, are there, there are appeal rights?
Yes, there are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the Planning Commission's decision can appeal that decision to the council. Forms are available online. Appeal must be filed within 10 days and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. We are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Number four. The public hearing for item number four, which is to consider a request for approval to modify planned development ordinance 1281 to increase the maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage for property zoned RM 5-12 PD, located at 130 Vessona Oaks Drive, APN 24424-42-008. This request for modification of a planned development ordinance is not considered a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Plan Development Amendment Application PD-25-002. Applicant is Elad Batido, Green Bay Remodeling, Inc., and the property owner is Ken McDonald. And before the staff report, may I have a show of hands from commissioners who visited the property? And are there any disclosures? Yes, Commissioner Rannett?
I did legal work for this association in 2004. I think that's wasted away by now in terms of conflict. And also notable that the HOA isn't supporting the application.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Merchant, will you be presenting the staff report tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for the introduction. Good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a request to modify the Vessona Oaks Plan Development Ordinance 1281 to allow an increase in the maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage specifically for Lot 8. In addition to the SEQA discussion in the staff report, staff would like to add that the proposed Plan Development Amendment is exempt from SEQA under the common sense exemption. As the limitations to allow an additional square footage of 400 square feet is not considered a significant change. The subject property is just under 2,000 square feet, located in the northern portion of the subdivision. A detached, excuse me, a detached single-family residence of size 2,001 square feet with a 460-square-foot attached garage stands on the property. The Town Council adopted the Plan Development Ordinance in 1975 for 17 single-family lots and one common area lot. The original approved plan shown in Exhibit 3 provide details like gross area and building coverage for the subdivision as a whole and not for individual lots. Town records for the subject property 130 Vessona Oaks show that in 1999, a minor residential application was approved to convert attic space to living area, indicating the original approved home was two stories and about 1,800 square feet. The proposed Plan Development Amendment would allow for an increase to the maximum allowable floor area ratio from 1.01 to 1.22 and lot coverage from 66% to 73.4% for the subject property. The proposed future development includes an increase in total living area from approximately 2,000 square feet to 2,400 square feet, with additions proposed to the second floor and conversion of attic space to living area. The first floor and garage size would remain unchanged. The applicant submitted a justification letter for their request and approval correspondence with the Vessona Oaks HOA and a summary of their public outreach results. As of today, staff has received no public comments regarding this application. Exhibit 4 includes a draft Plan Development Ordinance detailing a new performance standard 9, reflecting the applicant's request. At this time, no development is proposed. Future proposal for additions would be subject to review under a minor residential development application. Based on the findings presented in the staff report, staff recommends forwarding a recommendation of approval of amendment of the Plan Development Ordinance 1281 to the Town Council. This concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Birch.
If we make a change to this today, is it, is it only for this specific lot? Or does then the allowable increase in far pertain to all the lots?
This is only specific to Lot 8.
Okay, so every, any time any of these want to go over, they have to come through the same process? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We will now open the public portion of the public hearing on item four and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. And I believe the applicant's team or whoever's speaking for them is on Zoom.
That's what I understand as well. So if you're going to be speaking on behalf of the project, please raise your hand in Zoom. SLC Design, you can speak.
Hi, I am the building designer for this project here. I just want to give a light introduction to what we did for the homeowner. So we are proposing a residential renovation addition project that includes the new sunroom and a new addition to the existing structure. On the interior and, well, I'm sorry, on the interior, the second level with featured relocated kitchen and expanded family room to improve the functionality and the circulation. On the third level is a primary bedrooms bathroom, which we will be remodeling. And adjacent to the primary bedroom is an existing mezzanine, which they currently using it as a shared home office. Both homeowners work from home full-time and currently share this single office space. So we are proposing to convert this mezzanine to a new en suite bedroom, which is interior addition by constructing a new staircase and provide direct access to the new en suite. This will also allow one of the homeowners to use this new space as a dedicated office or a guest room. The addition bedroom also provides much-needed flexibility for the household as a couple's elderly parents visit multiple times a year and stay for extended periods. And the family's two sons would then have to share a bedroom. So with the new bedroom, the home will be better equipped to accommodate for everyone comfortably. As part, so as part of the planning process, I know it has, seems to be exceeding the normal floor area ratio, but seems like HOA, we had obtained HOA approval. So we're just asking to see if you guys would approve this project as well. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant team at this time? No? Okay, we will, oh, sorry, yes, Commissioner Sordi?
I don't have my own, the whole packet because my iPad crashed. Is the, so is the square footage addition all being captured under the same roof? Without any walls moving out? That's what I recall from my review, but I don't have it in front of me anymore. So I just want to make that clarification. I don't know if that's for.
This is a question of applicant or staff?
I'll direct that one to the applicant. They're still on.
No, no, the addition is an additional square footage to the back, to the rear, to the existing rear yard.
Okay, so it's all, it's all encapsulated under the existing roof? It's not?
No, it's not.
Sorry. And so the square footage as well as a bump out to the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I don't have a follow-up, I understand now, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for the applicant team at this time? Okay. We, okay, so thank you. And I now invite comments from the public. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Then if there are no hands raised and no one's, I did not get any, okay. Then I guess we, now if the applicant, if you would like to make a closing statement, you will have an additional three minutes to speak.
Closing statement. Well, I, on behalf of the homeowner, just want to, you know, we have, we have. Well, I, on behalf of the homeowner, just want to, you know, we have, we have done a lot of like back and forth with, with doing just the existing footprint of the home and it doesn't seem like it's, you know, worked for their family because, because they, as I mentioned before, having their family and their extended parents coming. And so with the addition and providing the new bedrooms and then enlarging the space, it helps, you know, help them in a way, having the, I'm sorry, it's so late, I'm just not really thinking.
It's okay, it's fine. You do not have to use the full three minutes.
Yeah, so anyway, so the functionality of the space where we added the rear yard addition and also making that additional bedroom in the mezzanine, it really accomplished a lot for them. And so I just hope that you guys would approve this project for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant right now? Okay, we will now close the public portion of the public hearing on item four and I invite commissioners to ask questions of staff, provide comments or propose a motion. I am going to jump in first. I have a question for staff. We, I mean, a couple of clarifying questions. So first, we are just forwarding a recommendation to Town Council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to say to my fellow commissioners that sometimes when something kind of seems a little bit straightforward and then we forward a recommendation to Town Council, we haven't discussed, we haven't discussed some things of our findings that they are required to make because they are making the final decision. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, voice our thoughts and opinions and have a discussion about this even though it's late for their sake. And then my second question for staff is that a, we are just looking at changing the existing, what is it, the ordinance for the planned development today? Is this, it seems like the plans for the entire project are somewhat ready to go. Is this, they're doing this in two phases because the proposed plan would be considered a minor residential application and wouldn't have to come in front of Planning Commission? Or is that?
That would be the discretion of the planning director.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct, Chair, that this is in two phases. The PD amendment would enable the property to have an increase in the maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage.
Okay.
So that's the first legislative act that has to happen because that's the ordinance that governs these properties, including the one before you.
Okay.
So they need to go through, get that approved hopefully, depending on what council decides. And then they would come back for whatever application, whether that's a building permit, a minor rez, architecture in site. But currently, given the parameters of the ordinance, we didn't find a way to be able to do it as a minor rez like it was done previously. And this one also had an added challenge of increasing the lot coverage because these are townhomes.
Yeah.
We need to go through this step first.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, now who else? Commissioner Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a question for staff. I'm a little confused about the homeowners association. There's nothing really in our packet that they approved it or that, I know the applicant did mention that it was okay with the HOA, but I don't, do we need more specification on that or more?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. There was an exhibit that was included in the staff report, that is their correspondence with their HOA that sort of mentions, page number 797.
Oh, thank you for that. I don't...
It's Exhibit Six.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rasby, did you have a question?
Chair, you asked my question. Thank you so much.
Oh, perfect. Vice Chair, oh, really? Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Well, then we should probably discuss. Does anyone want to kick it off? Do you want?
I can be three for three tonight and start.
Thank you.
This seems to me, again, completely non objectionable. The, the ask, I think, is relatively minor. The HOA is in approval. The neighbors seem to agree. So everybody that's impacted, including this homeowner, seems to be on the same page. The redesign, which we're not actually considering this evening, seems to fit this homeowner and will help future homeowners as well. So I would move, or I would move to forward a recommendation to Town Council approving the, the modification of the PDO as described in the packet. And if the commission would like, I can make that motion now.
Yes, I think that I, in a moment perhaps, I just want to add that...
Just let me know.
Okay, thank you. I do just want to add that we, you know, although, like I said, we don't have to specifically make all these findings, we, I do think that it fits with, you know, changing one of these overlay zones or whatever. And the main thing is like, does this comply with our general plan? I think it totally does and I think that's why we don't have a lot to talk about here because it is a minor change and the HOA and all the neighbors support it and it, I believe that it, you know, that it really does comply with the, the general plan and everything that is in that, you know, section 29 of the Town Code for this, for the planned development overlay zone. So with that being said, do you want to now?
I will. Thank you for that input. So I will move to forward to Town Council a request to approve to modify the Plan Development Ordinance 1281 to increase the maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage for property zoned RM 5-12 PD located at 130 Vizona Oaks Drive, APN 424-42-008. I can make the findings as required by section 29.80.095 of the Town Code for granting approval of a planned development overlay zone and that the amendment to the planned overlay zone is consistent with the general plan.
Okay, and Commissioner Burnett seconded that. Any discussion?
I have a question regarding the findings and considerations on Exhibit Two. Is that only for council's consideration or do we need to make them as a planning commission?
So what I understand is those are all in Exhibit Two. The maker of the motion didn't reference Exhibit Two specifically, but he mentioned the ordinance section, which encompasses all of those.
I see. Okay.
And to the extent my motion was unclear, I will explicitly incorporate those into my motion.
Okay, great. Then I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. And because this is just a recommendation, I'm, there's no appeal.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to our report from the Director of Community Development, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Chair. Sean, can you pull my 100-slide deck, please? Just kidding. Sure thing. So only one, one item tonight. Planning, or the Town Council on August 8th considered an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision for 45 Brizawa Road from an adjacent neighbor. The appeal was denied and the project was approved.
Thank you for that update. Subcommittee reports, in addition to this, we do subcommittees, but no one's, I don't think, right? Great, okay. Thank you to staff and everyone in the public that has abandoned us. And be no further business of the commission, this meeting is adjourned.